This time, I'd like to call to order the October 10th, 2007 zoning commission meeting. As the records show that Ms. Paige Becknell is absent, all of the commissioners are present. This time, we'd like to go ahead and open up the public comment period. Anyone wishing to address the commission on any agenda item that is not up for public hearing, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. No one wished to speak. Okay. Let's see, item four, acceptance of the minutes of the September 12th, 2007 meeting.
I move to accept.
I have a motion to approve by Don Grant.
There were some handwritten edits on the copy that we received, so if we accept, make a move that we, in addition to Mr. Don's movement, that we accept with the handwritten comments.
And it's great.
He agrees.
I don't have any handwritten comments.
Minutes from the zoning commission, September 12th, 2007, page three, page four, and page five.
No handwritten comments on mine either.
So can you tell me what those comments?
Yes, under, on page three, under E, third paragraph is just a semicolon, last paragraph, instead of, second line, it says the same, "proposed development," it says, "proposed rezoned area." Turning to page four, under nine, subcommittee report, Julio, it's addressing your comments. At the end of that paragraph, it says, "The Board of Adjustments will be sent the board..."
To the board.
To the board for their consideration.
We've got the corrected copy.
I have the original edited version.
I have the corrected version too. I moved that we adopt the corrected version.
Yes. Mine just wasn't typed up and all pretty.
Second.
Wait a minute, I've got, I've got Don making the original motion to approve.
Correct. And then this motion will, I withdraw my motion.
Okay. So I'm still entertaining, Alan, you want a second Don motion?
Yes.
I've got a motion to approve by Don Grant, seconded by Alan Kraus. Is there any objection or discussion? Motion passes. Item five, public hearing to consider the following rezoning. Zoning review ID 1811.07, Point Homeless Plantation. Is there anyone here to represent this property?
My name is Charles Tebow, and I'm an owner, one of the owners of the plantation, and I also manage the plantation. And we're here to ask you to rezone the property, a recommendation to rezone the property from medium density to industrial. Several months ago, we started working with the Ascension Economic Development Group with Tommy Kurtz on developing this site as a, as a mega site to be marketed by them and perhaps even the state. Since then, we've had some interest in the property, the people who are interested in it. We're one of four sites that they're looking at, and it's, it's a low impact in terms of environment and so forth. It's a fabrication facility. We can't say too much about it yet because we're sworn to secrecy, but that much has been in the paper, and you probably know who it is, although we can't say. But anyway, we have some, some folks here tonight, particularly Tommy Kurtz, who can tell you more about how this developed and, and what we're looking at. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
I'd like Mr. Kurtz to come up and give us a little synopsis of what this is about.
I think he's gonna do that.
Just a quick, uh, he's coming. Good evening. How we doing? As, as Charles had indicated, this has been a part of, let me introduce myself first. I'm Tommy Kurtz, President and CEO of the Ascension Economic Development Corporation, and we have been working for about a year now on identifying a mega site in Ascension Parish, not only just a mega site, but a certified mega site that would help us in attracting a large manufacturing project. There are currently about 10 certified mega sites around the country. The one, the most recent one, actually, in Louisiana, was one in Tangier-Baho Parish, where they certified about 3,000 acres. The purpose of doing that is to help basically do preliminary work in advance, so that when a company or a site selection consultant comes to you, you will have done a lot of work in advance, you will have obtained an option on the property, which we're currently doing. We have a signing of the option of the property, our organization, tomorrow. You will have done work on the Phase One environmental, you will have done maps, and I've actually, later, we're gonna look at some maps that we've actually done on the property. In doing this, and we were approached by the state a few months back in actually submitting the site, because we had done so much work in the past, in the last few months, on a project, and that is Project Sonoma, which is a thousand-job metal fabrication project that Louisiana is one of three final states, and our site is one of two in Baton Rouge, potentially another one in, in the St. Charles or St. John area, that's still to be decided. So while we were doing this, at the same time, in getting this, the mega site developed and getting it certified, doing a lot of the work on it, we were asked to submit the site on behalf of the state, because so much work had been done on it, plus because of its river access, it's less than a mile from rail, and other characteristics, only eight and a half miles from the interstate, that made it an attractive site for manufacturing. So, so lo and behold, after a few months, and actually, as of September 17th, we were actually visited by the company officials and the site selection group, Staubach, out of Dallas, on the project. So, but one of the things, is a problem, is obviously the zoning, and it was something that we were gonna have to, obviously, that was one of the things that, in order for it to be certified, obviously, it has to have the correct zoning. So this is part of our process. So we were in the process of doing this, while at the same time, though, this project came along. So it's, obviously, we were gonna go through the motions to do this anyway, because we had to, but obviously, the urgency has increased when you add this project to it. Even if we don't get the project, we still wanna, wanna, obviously, turn it into a mega site, because it helps us in regards to attract a major manufacturer that would help create jobs and investment. And also, being on the West Bank, we, we looked at sites both on the East and West Bank. We hired Peak Consulting, that had actually helped certify the Tangier-Baho site. We looked at sites on the East Bank, on the West Bank, and based upon, you know, issues such as where we could build a dock. We had to eliminate some sites, because, you know, dealing with the Mississippi River is not just something that happens, it's just not like building a dock anywhere you want. There's issues in, in regards to silting, and, and where barges can go and ships can go. So that eliminated some sites. We also had issues with, on the East Bank, a lot of the sites are owned by existing plants. They're not gonna wanna sell us 1,000 acres for a non-related industry. So it was all boiled down to basically about four sites, and out of the four, two were recommended, I think that's been in the papers, which was the Ormet property, which, which we, we could not get an option on that site, plus also, there was, it was very close to some residential developments that were approved, including the Orange Grove property, so that was a problem. So this site offered an opportunity also, that it was far away from, from a lot of residential, because you do have a point, you can build within, within that side of that property. So that, that made it attractive. So currently, right now, we're working with the state, the Port of Baton Rouge, the Baton Rouge Chamber, in marketing the site, and in fact, if you go to our website, we have a lot of maps, and I don't know if Ozzy has, has some information, we have some maps up there. You may not be able to see this, but one of the things we did as part of the mega site analysis, was we did some maps, and some spatial technology maps done by CK and Associates based in Baton Rouge. And this was done after we had focused on, on Point Homeless, Point Sunshine, we're calling it, that actually, if you look at, at their analysis, which looked at rail, water, we obviously did a good job, because it ranked eight or nine out of a possible score, based on water, it's far away from schools, it has all the characteristics that an industrial site would want. So, so at least from a, I guess, a science standpoint, we, we picked a good site. So CK and Associates did an analysis, and that came up. Next one? Next site?
Kitcher.
Oh, here they, okay, sorry.
Clear.
What about pointing at over here?
Right.
There we go. That's the flood zone map that we had done. It's, it's in high, in a high area, high flood zone. The soils are good also for building, not hard, very little wetlands on the property, especially in the back, and it has a high elevation. So those were just some of the things, and then also, this is a population density also, that the, the lower yellow is low population. So once again, it was, it was isolated by itself, it was on the water, eight and a half miles from Interstate 10, so it's right over the bridge. So those were all characteristics that, that made the site very attractive. So that is why, over the last 12 months, we've, we've gone through all this. It will put Ascension on the map, having the site, and, you know, when we're marketing it around the country, around the world, we'll have one of a few certified mega sites in the United States, and the only one on the Mississippi River certified as a deep-water site. So I'll be glad to take any questions. One of the things also that I wanna be clear on, in economic development, like in business, access, you know, speed to market is important, same thing here. The fact that we would have an option on the property, that we would have all the information of Phase One done, that puts you way ahead of the ballgame, because you've saved the company and the site selection consultant about six months of work. So, so, and you have, you have, you have the, all the information all bound up and packaged, and that's probably the best way to describe it, for these national site selection consultants and, and for companies.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
What do you have in mind as far as a buffer around the property? Because industrial property is supposed to have a buffer.
Right, I'm gonna address Ron, I think we were talking about 100-foot, Ron, do you wanna address that?
Generally speaking, on a buffer for that, it's gonna depend a lot on what kind of industrial facility goes in there. We can always say, and I've, I've told the other neighbors in, in the neighborhood that I can't see it ever being anything less than 100-foot, but the reality is that most of these facilities like this are gonna set their own buffer limits. And as you notice, in other large industrial installations in the parish, they buy large amounts of property and locate it on the inside of them, because they don't want to be close to other residential areas, for a number of reasons, for their own protection, for the protection of the surrounding neighbors, and because they just don't want the nuisance factor of lawsuits and that type of thing. The particular concern that I know they're going after now, since I've got a pretty good idea of what that's gonna look like, the kind of impacts it's gonna have, I'm sure they will impose their own buffer zone substantially greater than 100-foot, and it could run into hundreds of feet.
A facility like this, this is, this piece of property is like 987 acres. A facility like this is probably gonna cover about 40 or 50 acres.
Right.
And it'll be on the downstream side of the point, which is, which would be almost a mile from the nearest residence, back in Aben, and probably almost a mile the other way.
And I think that would be good, but if I were to make a motion, I would require at least 100-foot buffer. We would require...
That's...
The company that, the businesses are gonna be appearing before that.
How did they get it on the plants on Highway 30? Was that just set up when the zoning was originally set up?
I don't know, but you can't condition a rezoning.
That was, that was done when they created the zoning maps.
Well, I've got another issue. Okay, this is not conditioned either. Right now, you haven't told me what kind of business, you haven't told me the name of the business, so I don't need to know, okay? I don't need to know. I haven't known up to now, so I still don't need to know. And you're coming to me, telling me, yes, we, this business is gonna locate here.
No, that was not said, that was not said. This is...
Mr. Kurtz, let me finish, please.
Sure, sure.
Let's say for the sake of argument, that we guarantee you an approval, that the commission, the council grants you an approval, and the deal falls through. We've gone ahead and grant, we've allowed you to change some property from medium-intensity residential to industrial. We have no idea what's gonna go there. Now, you can say that the business will go ahead and set its own buffer, but we still don't know what's gonna go there. And it could be, it could be a, an unfriendly use. And to say DEQ and EPA and everybody else is gonna go ahead and jump in and take care of it, well, that's fine, but we have no assurances.
Well, here, let me, let me point this out, and, and Mr. Tebow is exactly correct. We're talking about a thousand-acre site, roughly. Unless it's an incredibly large facility, the likes of which, outside of Exxon, I can't think anybody offhand has built anything that big in a long time around here, I can't imagine there being any less than numerous deals over time taking place on that large piece of property. And each time that takes place, it's not, it's not a situation of an individual selling to another industry. Basically, what's taking place with these options on property, they're actually gonna be buying from the Economic Development Corporation. So it'll have to go through hearings, approvals, everything else for that to take place. And so we will always get at least a passing glance at it, although generally speaking, our zoning and planning does not get heavily involved in industrial properties. It's not like it's something that won't be wide out and open, where you will not be able to get some control over it.
Mr. Kurtz?
Can I address that real quick? On the, on the option that we're currently negotiating, which we have actually a meeting tomorrow, our board, which is a seven-member board, I have two members of my board here tonight, have to approve any option that we assign. So, and those, those meetings are public, because of public funds that we receive, even though we're, even though we're a separate nonprofit corporation. So there is a stopgap, and I, I think the issue is that the corporation is, is endowed to make decisions on creating jobs and investment, but doing the best, the best well-being also of the parish. And that's why we're doing this project, to create jobs and investment. So the process here is that regardless of whether or not the project comes or not, we are going to market this, and we have to market, it has to be an industrial site for us, obviously, to even to, to, to market this nationally, whether it be for a, and answer your question, the project is a metal fabricator, and they're gonna make, they're gonna make metal boilers with assembly and welders, basically, for the thousand jobs, primarily for that project. But once again, this is how the business of economic development works. We, all we, all we can do is provide information, work with the company, and it's a, it's a very cold process in regards to whether you're in or out. The biggest thing in economic development is staying in and not being cut out. So we have to do all this due diligence for us to even get in the game oftentimes, and to get ahead of the game. So I, I can't, I can't guarantee you what, what's gonna go there. All I can guarantee you is that it's gonna be a manufacturing or industrial operation that our board has to, my board has to approve, before it's just the option assigned to some other company. Or maybe even the state. The state could always buy the property too, like it did in North Louisiana for the auto plant.
But, Mr. Kurtz?
And another thing specifically, just to, in the option itself, the option between Corporate and Tebow Incorporated and such, I said, ADCD or whatever they call it.
ABC.
It's specific to certain types of businesses. In other words, they can't put a hazardous waste site there and those type of things. We don't want that type of business, we don't wanna sell to that type of business, we're not gonna do it.
Let me ask you this, now, okay. From what Mr. Tebow has just said, there are certain types of businesses that will not be allowed at all. Does this condition pertain to every site, or just this one?
Every site means what?
If I'm not mistaken, there are several sites that y'all have been looking at for mega sites? This isn't the only one.
It's the only one that would get an option on it, yeah. Based on the time that it took for this, I don't think we'll be doing any anytime soon.
Okay.
Because it's a long process.
Okay.
And, and we've actually, the corporation, along with the Baton Rouge Chamber and the state, and Entergy, actually, have spent probably over $30,000, $40,000 just preliminarily in this, with more money to spend on engineering work for this site when a project comes in.
Julio, you have it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Mr. Kurtz, that's okay, you know, would it not be beneficial for you in marketing this property to an, to an industrial user, to know that there's, it's a multi-part question, so let me finish it out.
Okay, I'll take notes.
To, to know that there's, that there's in fact, a, a prescribed buffer to, to protect him from residential encroachment, okay? So if you look at our zoning map today, you know, as a result of the process of establishing it and what have you, and in lengthy discussions with many of the plants, that there was an agreed-upon linear buffer between them and adjoining properties, that would be developed for whatever, residential, commercial, retail, whatever. You have an opportunity here, through, through this rezoning, to essentially, you know, create that along two boundaries, which are the only two that really matter, or really the, there's only one that really matters, which would be the southern boundary, the short, short leg of the boundary.
Right, right, because you have 400 acres between the other and...
Right. So I guess the question to you is, is that, would it not be even more advantageous as a marketing tool to say, not only, not only do you have this land rezoned industrial, but when we rezoned it, we actually already established a protection for you...
Right.
So that, so that residential won't encroach upon you, although you're taking it out of your land, you're doing it, and although we can't condition it, because it's strictly rezoning, I think that, and, as I look to staff and, and the attorney, I don't know if it's something that you could see as a positive measure, that you might look at and say, hey, you know, it might be better for us to amend that into the application and say, we want an industrial zoning with 100-foot buffer along the south boundary, and that's your application, so that when the zoning map's created, you, you have your industrial zoning with 100-foot buffer within your property as part of your rezoning application.
I think that's a good idea.
That might turn into a marketable advantage for you.
Is that, is that something that could be added?
Sure.
Okay, yeah, we...
From a practical standpoint, there's not gonna be anything...
No, I, I understand that, but all I'm saying is, is that if you can turn that, if you can turn that into a marketable opportunity for you, it might be better.
Yeah, the industry does not wanna be next, next to residents, trust me.
Right.
But it's not, trust me.
Right, so if you, if you have it built in, it might actually look better, you can turn it into a marketing tool.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
I guess we didn't realize that that could have been an option, so that's, that's fine.
Okay. Well then, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take it that you're, for, Mr. Siegler?
Yes.
Adjusting the, the request to rezonate industrial with 100-foot buffer along the southern boundary, like, like however that buffer district is defined in our zoning code?
According to our code, that requires, I can require an opaque fence in landscaping in that, whatever I said.
But that's it. Well, no, I mean, it's not what you require, I mean, it's, it's shown on the zoning map as a buffer.
We can set it that way, yes.
Okay.
Or since they've agreed to it, if a motion is made to approve, that that can, that can be made as part of the motion. I still have to open up a public hearing, though. I kinda like to do that before we do anything else. Any, any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I have a quick question. There's an old house on the property.
Yeah.
Do you have any plans for it?
We would hope, we've tried to sell it to be moved, and with no luck. We was hoping that the company would come along, and take it, and it would be beautiful.
Turn it to office, be nice, like welcome, entertainment area, right, someone do that along, along the river.
But being out there and waiting...
That's a sick.
And tried to sell it to be moved.
Okay, I'll put that out. Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Then if there are no other comments or questions from commissioners, I'd like to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this item, please sign in with the secretary, and then you'll get your three minutes to speak.
I'm Chairman of the Board of the Ascension Chamber of Commerce, and first, you know, we'd like to publicly thank you for your service, particularly after sitting through these three meetings tonight, we really appreciate what you do here on a regular basis. The Chamber of Commerce and, and its Board of Directors would like to publicly express our support for the zoning change for this mega site, which will, Point Homeless or the Point Sunshine, as it will be called, as it will lay the infrastructure to allow for economic development. We believe that this change in zoning is in line with the intent of the master plan, and is not outside of those boundaries, and we urge you to strongly consider passing it. We also feel that with this infrastructure, or with the framework built so that industry and business can locate to our parish, it will definitely provide much-needed jobs on our West Bank. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michelle Harris. I just had one question to Mr. Tebow, was that they were saying that there was only certain businesses allowed. I need, I want to know, what were they? He named that there would be no, uh, waste, uh, hazardous waste.
Ma'am, Mr. Tebow, hold, okay, you, you can address your questions to the commission, and Mr. Tebow will have the opportunity to, to answer that in a rebuttal.
Okay. He said there would be no hazardous waste, with other, other companies was not allowed on the property.
Okay. We'll, we'll have that answer for you shortly. Who's next?
I'm Kent Shakesnight, I'm Councilman District Two, another time tonight. A couple of years ago, whenever we started the Economic Development Corporation, this is why we did it, is to bring forward an opportunity for the people of the parish to get good economic developments and good jobs, and do it the right way. They've done a tremendous job of investigating and finding out exactly what's supposed to be done, and doing their due diligence ahead of time, instead of this being something that's done on the back end. I was one that has questioned all throughout the process, because I think people have to question these things, we're zoning, we're committing a, a, a big change in the area. And it's kind of the doubting Thomas, I had to put my hand in, in the wound, to make sure that the people in the area would be protected. As recently as last Friday, we had our last meeting with Mr. Kurtz, and he has satisfied myself and all the questions I had, and all the questions I had from the area residences as much as possible, to assure that this site would not be something that would impose upon anybody, but that it would be a possibility of bringing 1,000 good-paying jobs to the area, which is something that we need desperately on the West Bank. I think it's a great opportunity to move forward there. And so because of all those things, you know, I am in favor of this happening, especially since Economic Development Corporation with the seven members has control of what comes there. And as an ex-official member of that corporation, we do have some dialogue with them, and we have a chance to control the actual things that go there. So it is a buffer from the people to have a chance to protect the area residences for anything that should not go there, that does not fit in that area. But believe me, the opportunity to have 1,000 good-paying jobs in a, in a fabrication plant is an opportunity we can't pass up, because it's, it's too good a thing. The other thing is, is that we were talking about buffering, and it has pretty, been pretty much since the time that I was on the Planning Commission, that pretty much generally accepted to have...
Thirty seconds.
About a 30, I mean, about a 600-foot buffer to go transition from industrial to residential. I know on Ormet property and on the Highway 30. So it would be something to think of, and I, and I agree with Mr. Dumas, that I think it would be beneficial for the industry coming there to have that buffer between the residences. And I would request that you would include a buffer within those areas. Thank you.
Mr. Parenton, they've agreed to it. They agreed to put it in there, the 100-foot, now, if, I mean, if they...
They're remanding their request to include...
Mr. Shakes, they are remanding, or is Mr. Shakes not requesting that we put that request in? They're requesting...
I'm just asking, as part of the public hearing, that you consider up to a 600-foot buffer, because that's been about the standard that we've used in the past as a transition from industrial to residential.
Now, but we'll, we'll take that up with it at that time.
And whatever you deem as the right thing, that would be fine.
Thank you.
Councilman Oliver Joseph, I just wanted to make a statement on behalf of Mr. Ron Siegler and the planning department there. I got a couple of phone calls on this matter, on this public hearing, and Mr. Siegler went out to the community, and the ladies, all the ladies in the back, back there, property owners and part of that community, and he made sure they were that ease of what's going on, and right now, they... And right now, they feel real comfortable on this matter, right now it's on the table. So, I'm in favor of this, and I'm hoping that your rezone is probably to low intensity. And also, Mr. Ziegler, we'll have a public meeting in that community on Monday.
Monday night at the Mount Bethel Church. We're gonna have a bigger deal that we're advertising with Tommy Kurtz, myself presenting this again to the community so they'll get a good idea of what we're talking about and why we want to do it.
And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's it. All right. Mr. Tebow, if you would. Ms. Harris had a question pertaining to the types of businesses. If you...
Specifically in our option with economic development, the hazardous waste sites are prohibited and it's worded "other similar businesses." That's how it's worded. I think with that safeguard and also with the safeguard of having the Economic Development Board being able to really decide what goes there and what doesn't go there, I think we sufficiently safeguarded. On the buffer zone question that Kent had, I don't have a problem with that because I know, again, from a practical standpoint, that a business does not want to be next to residential. So, I don't have a problem with a 600-foot buffer on the south side.
Is Mr. Kurtz agreeable to that dimension?
Yes. I guess we didn't realize that we can, I guess.
But I don't have a problem with that because they're gonna, they're not gonna locate on that end of the property because the dock was going to be on the other side.
Yeah, I guess we didn't realize that option was available to us, so we're in support of it.
Okay. And I guess it's imperative that we understand that that's, that you're amending the request include that.
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I guess I'll go ahead and make a motion to recommend approval for the rezoning of the subject tract to the industrial zoning district and the 600-foot buffer along the southern property line as proposed, amended, proposed.
I have a motion to approve by Julio Dumas.
Take a second.
Seconded by Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Good luck. Let's hope it comes.
Item six, public hearing to consider the following. Six A, rezoning slash variance application. Mr. Dumas, if you would...
Yes, what we have before you is recommended request, amended or new request for rezoning application. The request for the variance application, I would respectfully request that we defer on it simply because the board of adjustment, I appeared before them, presented it to them, and they are looking at it. They, at the next meeting, I would anticipate that they will give us comments and feedback, but however, we are ready to move forward with the application for rezoning.
Okay, so you want to, you'd like to defer on the request for the variance application, but the rezoning application, you won't still go ahead and move forward on?
Correct.
All right. Any comments or questions from commissioners? Okay, if there are no comments or questions from commissioners, then I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this item, please sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. And there's no one to speak. Staff, Ron, I want, I'd like to hear from both you and Charles, all your opinions on this application because let's face it, staff is going to be the party handling, handling this. We'll just get copies of it and get to read it, but I mean, y'all are gonna have to work with it. You want me to help you, Charles, with a specific question? I mean, I...
Is they working with the application and working with applicants? We have really experienced no problem with the present application. This is a recommendation from the committee, but as far as staff, I've experienced no problems with the present application.
I would say the same thing, however, that does not mean I would necessarily have a problem with a new application either. It seems like it asks all the questions that need to be asked. And then some.
So, so there...
I'm sorry.
So, so, Ron, in your opinion, there is a, you know, I mean, it would be of some advantage to us to go ahead and then maybe ask a few more specific questions or spell out some information that maybe the old, oh, the current application doesn't?
This asks for more information than the previous application does.
Okay.
And some of that, I can see some benefit to, and some of it, I may not, but then again, I might not know enough to know that I needed that information to start with, too, so, you know. If that's possible.
I might add that the part of the reason was is to split the, the current application's used for both variances and rezoning, so the goal was to have two separate applications.
And it does that.
Well, I'm not saying that's necessarily a bad thing. I think we should be a little more specific, you know, with some of the issues that we deal with in order to get more...
More detailed information. I like the fact, I like the fact that it's notarized.
Well, if I'm not, Charles, at one time, I think you and I discussed, doesn't the current application, wouldn't that be, or is required as far as notarization, but we don't really, we haven't been acquiring it of applicants?
We really haven't been acquiring it. The present one has a space for notarization, but we really haven't been requiring it.
But I don't think that is an unusual request for someone asking as a property owner, particularly in a zoning matter. It'd be nice to have it notarized, and you know, all the information, you've got to make sure you're dealing with the right folks. Same deal with the problem we've been having with Platts. The more specific, the more you know exactly everything's right, the better off you're gonna be.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Good job.
Ready for a motion?
Well, yeah, I'd already gone ahead and opened up the public hearing, and no one spoke, so I closed it, and...
I'll make a motion to approve as written here.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the proposed rezoning application as presented by Steve Barrow, seconded by Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. In order to defer, O'Neil, in order to stay right, do we need to go ahead and make a motion to defer the public hearing on the variance application?
No, this is just, this is a new business.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure. Okay, moving along, item 6B, fees.
Again, as I indicated at the last meeting, Mr. Becknell and the committee spent quite a bit of time doing some research and coming up with a schedule of fees that made sense based on some research of some comparable, you know, areas. We researched areas from as far east as Pensacola and as far west as Beaumont. But anyway, so what you have before you is the committee's recommendation for the fees to charge for rezonings and other site plans. And I don't know if these fees have to go to the parish council or not. I don't know if we're supposed to make a recommendation to parish council or...
Existing fees do not have to. New fees require approval. Or proposed fees would have to.
Well, this only changes the dollar amount of existing fees.
No, this concludes PUDs and SPUDs.
Well, you've got, you've got PUDs, SPUDs, TNDs, historic site plans.
That's right, there are some new fees here, that's correct.
Let's see, overview of business park.
Assuming this is passed, then we will draft an ordinance to submit to council that includes the new one, a description of what the new fees would be for.
Okay, question I've got is, what was the reasoning for going up on rezoning from $250 plus $50 per acre for each additional acre over the first acre? I mean, I understand if we were not proposing new fees, for example, the PUDs, SPUDs, TNDs, historical site, but we're proposing new fees to offset our cost. So, we don't, we're not eating the engineering costs and so forth. Rather than proposing new fees and then going up on an existing fee when, I mean, right now, I don't really see a lot of rezoning requests coming to us, so, and there's not a lot of review involved as far as the need for charging, going up on a fee, a fee in this particular case.
Then, I will say this, we were low, we were on the low end of the scale what we were charging versus everyone else.
Right.
And there, over time, the advertising costs have gone, you know, they're roughly double what they were originally. And this was just, this just happened to be the number that kind of fell out in the middle and everybody thought seemed fair.
And this is not above, this is not even par with what other communities, this actually stays below par. Okay, so we're not...
Why aren't we par?
Well, par was, I think we saw par as a...
Too much of a jump.
Much more significant jump, yeah. And we thought we could make it work with this, with this number.
We're about, we're median on almost everything with this new number.
More than, it's acceptable. It's underneath acceptable as far as cost, yeah.
Need a motion?
Now, we do have enough into the PUDs and SPUDs now that we think that we won't get torn up on the engineering fees.
That was one of the, I know, that's been one of the bigger concerns because we were...
That was the principal reason for addressing this.
Right, and then we had a couple of other things, I know, like the, oh, the site, the business site review and the historical sites, we weren't, we weren't charging anything for those at all either, so we were, we were eating a lot of cost there.
Right.
And from what I'm looking at, I think we've covered ourselves pretty well with these new fees to where we, we should be all right.
Right.
But I just saw, you know, we were going from $250 to $375, and that was kind of a big jump. I just wanted to make sure I understood what was going on when we were proposing new fees.
And remember, we also put a cap on that straight rezoning because we knew that you got to a point where really it didn't matter.
Sure. All right, well, I'm gonna go ahead there. Charles, you have...
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
I just noticed one thing. I think we have a fee down for adjacent property owner notification, it's $5.
Ooh, yes.
I think presently, the cost of certified mail is $5.45, so we've been charging $6, and I think this should reflect at least $6.
We should change that.
Well, wait a minute, if we've already been charging that, didn't we agree, the commission voted on that?
The way we charged whatever the cost was.
Uh, sometime back.
That's right.
That issue came up as a separate issue by itself, and we voted on that at the time, and that was already adopted for six, I think $6 was proposed.
This should reflect that.
It should, yeah, it should say six.
Should say six, yes. In fact, let me point out to you that this schedule has a couple of spelling checks because the author, English is not his first language. That's been my excuse.
I was gonna ask what an SOUD was.
So, that should be...
What's a sound?
Sued.
And the PLNA should be a PLAM, and the $5 should be $6.
It's math, not your second language either.
My spell check is not entirely in English. My apologies.
I do have, okay, well, that's all right. Sometimes spell check doesn't really help you out because the word that you put, used it in, is it misspelled, but it's still used incorrectly?
I can guarantee you PLNA is my word.
PLNA.
The, I do have another question. I do have one other question. When the review of fees was taking place, did anyone review the fee for requesting a variance? Or was that intentionally omitted?
I intentionally omitted that because frankly, I, in my discussion with the board of adjustment, I asked the question if we, the zoning commission, set the fees, and if so, could they review the fees and make a recommendation to us as well? So, which is why I deferred the application, but I wasn't certain as to whether we set that fee or they set the fee. And so, I, we intentionally deleted it for lack of clarity on that issue.
As part of this exercise, staff will suggest a fee change to them.
Well, traditionally, I believe that's the way it has been. Charles, unless I'm mistaken, staff has, whether there's been a problem in the past or there's, they seem where there was a deficiency, staff has made a recommendation or brought it up in a subcommittee to be brought before the full commission.
Well, when the fee was established for variances through the board of adjustments, that was adopted by the zoning commission. When zoning went into effect, I do think a $35 fee is what we're charging now. I think that's, that's not enough.
Well, I was, that's why I was asking, because I was, I was looking, I was comparing the current fee schedule to what was proposed, and I was going through and looking at everything. It's like, well, where are the variances? Because I see their agendas are getting a little bit heavier, and it's like, well, are we really covering our cost?
I'm gonna, if I may, Mr. Chairman, maybe the appropriate thing to do, we have, I'll be going to the board of adjustment to get comments on the application, and I'll also, we'll also be having a subcommittee meeting, and maybe the, maybe the thing to do is to defer on this table until next meeting and bring you the board of adjustment, the recommended board of adjustment fee to incorporate into it, so we put forth one recommendation for the fees, if that's acceptable to the rest of the commission.
Chair, motion. To go to public hearing.
I think I'd opened up the public hearing, didn't I? I don't remember now.
No, you didn't.
All right, then I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this issue, please sign in with the secretary and you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak?
The only thing I have is you're charging no fees on PUDs, SPUDs, and TNDs right now. If you defer it another month, anybody who submits is not being charged a fee.
Well, let's, would, the current fee, the current, current fees, we, current fees that are already existence, we do not have to send to the council for approval. Only newly proposed fees have to go before the council for approval. And the, so, the issue of PUDs, SPUDs, TNDs, historic site plans...
Over review.
Overview of a business park, no matter what's gonna have to go before the parish council, but the rezoning application, the board, the variance that's existing, it would not have to go before the council for approval. That is, that's us, that's our jurisdiction.
Mr. Chairman, I think if you're revising it and coming up with a new fee or revised fee, I think that should go before the council.
I don't think it did in the past when we revised them before. I don't recall that going before the parish council.
I don't remember it being revised, really.
Uh, when we adopted fees back, this is the, this is the fee schedule as of 2003. I don't remember that going before the parish council. We handled that. We adopted these fees, and I don't believe it went before the council.
Maybe so. I don't remember that as legal advisors.
It was a policy, it was policy.
Okay.
It was, it was considered policy.
Check into it.
Well, of course, staff will do whatever the, whatever the commission's pleasure is, but, but in my, in my mind, you could adopt this tonight, and we could draft the ordinance for the new fees to go to the council, make them aware of the other suggestions we're changing, and it's just a part of that, it's a courtesy of the council. We could come back with whatever that change needs to be on the variance in the meantime. And if it doesn't require council approval, then we'll just implement it. But, but there's a good point to the fact, if you put off, I'm not sure it's gonna start a mad rush these days for somebody to rush in an application for a TND or a PUD, but the reality is, right now, we are not charging nearly, you know, we're not charging.
Mr. Peggington, do the all fees?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
Do you have to do some research?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I'm in agreement with O'Neal and Ron. We need to go ahead, and we need to, we need to get the...
New fees.
New fees. We need to move on those.
Okay.
Okay, because I, after going back and reviewing some of the, some of the charges to us with some of our developments, yes, we lost, we, we lost. So, let's, yeah, let's go ahead and move on.
I'd like to make a motion to approve as written with the couple of spelling errors mentioned and changing of the development code from $5 to $6. Make that in form of a motion.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I have a motion to approve the proposed zoning fees.
Clarification, you want the $6 on the adjacent property owner's notice, not the development code?
Yes.
Okay.
With the recommended minor changes by Steve Barrow, seconded by Scott Courtwright, is there any opposition or discussion?
You got it right.
Motion passes. Item seven, new business. Any items of new business to be brought before the...
The other thing I'd like, Charles reminded me that I was, well, I was too busy eating a sandwich or thinking about it, that I had forgot to talk about the drainage ordinance, of which you have a copy of the newly adopted version. Since we met last, we've had one big interdepartmental powwow, talking about implementation, checklists, how that will fit into the development code. Our new engineer, Mr. Chris Ewing, who I haven't formally introduced, Chris, why don't you stand up? Chris is our new civil engineer that we, that spends primarily most of his time with the planning department, and he's working on our floodplain management program. He is moving, he's working with C.J. Goddard from the Drainage District, and together they will come up with a checklist and a better implementation system than probably what we've had in past in terms of drainage issues. One thing you will need to note is that currently, unless we change this, the current, the current plan is for them to pass through everything they need to in front of the Drainage District before that moves to, to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, if you hear complaints about delays, it may not necessarily be on staff's end on this end.
Any other items of new business to be brought before the commission? I have one. Well, I have one, it was supposed to have been brought up last month, and it wasn't. We have an issue that we've been talking about, I know, in subcommittee for a while, and that's a recommendation to hire a professional planning consultant. Staff needs to be given direction to go ahead and advertise and move on this. So, that is the, no, I reminded you, and you forgot.
That's what I remember doing.
So, yeah, so, I decided to...
Take the bull by the bow.
Yeah. I was afraid that Julio might forget again, so, you know, I just...
Well, I'm glad you reminded me this late in the game.
No.
And you're right, sir. I think we, we discussed that. I think that what we also talked to, to, I think, O'Neal, you also kind of cautioned this on, on committing funds, so the way we were gonna make the motion is just to advertise for, for the retention of a planner with a stipulation that he wouldn't be hired until funds were dedicated, were allocated by the council to, for that service, because we can't really expend the dollars.
Well, the thing is, though, we, okay, revised statute does allow us the power to, to hire professional services.
You can't hire without the money.
Hold on, O'Neal, I'm, I'm getting to that. I'm getting to that.
A gratis planner.
Um, there has been some discussion of putting $300,000 into next year's budget to handle this, and I'm still, and I'm waiting on a confirmation from the administration on this issue to make sure that our money is in the budget to do this.
As of today, the 300 is in there, but, but it's not been through all the jump hoops, it has to go through an administrative level, and it still has to be passed on by the council.
Be that as it may, we can still advertise, we can still accept applications, we can still accept information pertaining to this. So, I mean, we can, we can move on that, and that's what we need to do.
Right, and I think that, again, the, what I, what I was, I think the motion is to, you know, direct staff to prepare the RFP, put it out on the street, with the condition, of course, that, that the project won't be awarded in contract sign until such time as the council actually puts the money in the budget or actually funds the, the project. But at least we have the, at least we have the RFP, we've gone through a selection process, and we have the planner in place for when, where we can actually sign the contract.
Right, and, and I don't know that we would actually be able to, to do anything until the beginning of next year, anyway, because we're gonna have the holidays coming up soon. How much time, I don't know, how much time do you think is, is adequate as far as advertising? I mean, that's, that's something I'm gonna leave up to y'all, but...
Well, I think, I think, you know, we can have the RFP ready certainly by the next meeting, and I think that's probably a good idea for you to review that RFP and make sure that, and let's discuss it, make sure that it's got all the concepts and everything that you're really looking for in terms of scope of work. Also, by that time, we'll have a whole lot better idea in terms of the budget what kind of money's gonna be available. But I would think that it would need to be out there on the streets at least 45 days in advertising.
So, we...
Allowed to respond.
Okay, so we review the RFP at next month's meeting.
Right.
And then we're talking about 45 days. So, we're not talking about doing anything, or being able to really do anything in January, anyway.
It'll be January, anyway.
So, you're gonna have an RFP ready to...
We'll have an RFP ready for next month.
Okay.
That was a motion? I'll, I'll second that.
I didn't make a motion.
No, he made a motion.
You made the motion, you made the motion to, he was looking at me when he said it, so I don't know.
No, I was, I was asking if that was a motion.
You made a motion, you made a motion to direct staff to proceed. Okay, I have a motion to, to direct staff to proceed with the...
Master planning activities.
Okay, and master planning activities by Julio Dumas, seconded by Steve Barrow. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item eight, old business, we have no old business. Item nine, subcommittee report.
We do not have a subcommittee meeting next month, but we will have one at the end of this month.
Okay. And item 10, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Take a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn by Scott Courtwright, seconded by Julio Dumas. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes, and we are adjourned.